Good evening and welcome to the Cabarrus County Board of Education's Work Session for Monday, November the 7th. I will call the meeting to order and I would ask the viewing audience and those that are here with us tonight to please join us in a moment of silence for Alexis Brown who was a senior at Central Cabarrus High School who passed away on November the 1st, 2011, if you'll join us now. Thank you, and our thoughts and prayers go out to Ms. Brown's friends and family. At this time, I would like to have a motion that the agenda be approved as presented.
The first.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We will begin with our recognitions, and first we will have to the podium, board members. This is your 3.1 under recognitions, Mrs. Kathy Auger, our Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources, who will present the Principal of the Year recognition. Ms. Auger?
Good evening, and I'd like to invite Ms. Hilda Batts and her administrative team also, who came in her support up to the front. Her husband's out of town this evening, and all of her team and other members of her staff have joined her this evening in support. We're pleased this evening to honor Hilda Batts as our 2011-2012 Principal of the Year. Our finalists were nominated by all the principals, and then a team of our former principals of the year, including Todd Smith, Edie Saywich, Carla Black, and Janet Smith, made the final selection. When asked about her philosophy of teaching and of education, Ms. Batts states she believes that every decision must be made with our students at the center of that decision. Our actions must be intentional, and our drive for excellence undergirded by continuous improvement. And in this regard, a staff member reported that she holds high expectations for students and staff, but she holds even higher expectations for herself. Another said, "What we would like people to know is that while Ms. Batts is the boss, students, staff, and parents know Ms. Batts is also a mentor, a counselor, a mother, and a friendly ear when you need one. She makes homemade baklava to share with the staff, and she'll stop in the middle of her busy day to even sew a button on a staff member's shirt." And then they put, "Really? She does this?"[178.56][178.56](Laughter). In the words of students, "I feel happy that you are our principal. You filled my bucket by being a really nice principal." Ms. Batts has been married to Larry Batts for 41 years, and I told her she must've got married at the age of five. She said six. She has two sons, a stepdaughter, and she's the doting grandmother to Brayden and Brianna. It was one of her teachers, Ms. Spurgeon, who told her that she would be attending college. Although she didn't know what college was, if Ms. Spurgeon said it, it was the law. At the age of 40, after working as a school volunteer in over 10 schools in three different cities, she returned to college as a 40-year-old student to begin her first master's program. In 1992, she became a counselor at AT Allen under Butch Little. She served an administrative internship in first year as Assistant Principal at Irvin, and then returned to AT Allen in 2001 as an Assistant Principal under Colleen Sane and then Cindy Scott. She became the principal of AT Allen in January of 2006. Hilda states she's immensely grateful to all the people who've nurtured and supported her throughout her life, and she is especially grateful to the staff at AT Allen, who she says make her look better than she is. Please join me in a round of applause congratulating Hilda Batts' selections.
And on behalf of the board, I will take a point of privilege to say the majority of us up here have worked with Ms. Batts for several years and know the challenges that she's had in actually beginning a new school, starting a new school, and those challenges, and handled them quite well. I worked on the committee with her, so we had a really good time. Colors, people, placing, and it was really good. She handled that transition very well from the old school to the new school, and we say thank you. So we know what a good job you do out there. Thank you very much. Okay, board members, next we will move to 3.2. And unfortunately, I hate that this happened, but we have to admit to an omission of a very important person who was not recognized for our District 6 meeting that took place on October the 10th. Mr. Mike Martin, who is our Cabarrus County Schools webmaster, and someone that we would not have visuals for anything that takes place within Cabarrus County Schools at the events at the schools or any event that we actually have, but were not for him. And he was omitted, and we so apologize. He is an extremely important person, and we appreciate all that you do and all that you did for that event. It was well orchestrated, and you are a huge part of it, so we apologize for the omission of your name in that recognition, and thank you for what you do. Unfortunately, you're more seen probably visibly than anybody else as you are here tonight, so thank you very much, Mr. Martin. We appreciate it.
Madam Chair, I'd like to interject briefly. My mother was an English teacher, and anywhere we would drive, she would always make us learn words, my brother and I. One of the words she taught me was ubiquitous. And of course, I've never forgotten it, but when you -- Mike, right there is the epitome of ubiquitous. You don't go anywhere that he's not there with the camper, representing us well, with a smile on his face, and doing a great job. So just so you -- I will remember to tell my mother that a word that she taught me popped up into my head when we were giving out a presentation at a board meeting, and she'll be thrilled.
And I appreciate that because when the first thing when I looked at when Ms. Monroe sent that to me --
Spell it.
Yeah, spell it.[434.33][434.33](Laughter). Was how did we miss that? Of all people, he's there in front of us all the time, so we do apologize. We don't want it to go unknown that you do a wonderful job, and we appreciate what you do. Thank you. Okay. All right, board members, we will move to 4.1 and begin with our report section. Let me know when you're there. We will begin with the construction report, and we will ask Ms. Kelly Klutz to the podium. And Ms. Klutz, we are there as far as I see, so it's all you.
Good evening. Dr. Probst is helping me out here, and I'll just go ahead and start with the construction report. As you can tell, there were some significant changes from last month to this month, and you will see those also in our budget amendments on the capital. And those are changes where the county has taken the additional funds as we finish the projects, AT Allen, Hickory Ridge, Patriots. We are not finished with Winkler, and so they have not removed any of those funds. Those funds, the dollars that were removed were indicated from Ham to Bly that those funds would be used for the road project. And I think we're calling it a couple of different terms, the Raging Ridge, Stalling Extension. I think we all know which road we're talking about. We're looking for funds for that road. Are there any questions on the construction report tonight?
Board members, I will open the floor up for discussion, and I will begin on Mr. Shue's side.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I had already asked my questions earlier, and Ms. Klutz did an excellent job. However, I did want to just ask one thing. Do they -- does the county request these funds back to us? Do they follow our budget, and how do they know what's coming to them? That kind of thing. I meant to ask you that earlier, but I forgot.
They do follow our budget, and they also give us a timeline within six months after the project closes, the school opens. They've given us that deadline to get all of our things closed out. So we've been working with that for about two to three years now, so we know we need to get everything closed up by that timeframe.
Ms. Monnet?
No comment except to say it's interesting to see you're still talking about that road.[573.32][573.32](Laughter). I think we were talking about the road 10 years ago.
Pretty long time. We're still looking for money for it.
Absolutely. Mr. Furr?
Well, one question I have. I did, I was at the MPA meeting, and my understanding, they're still working on the environmental -- has the environmental assessment been done yet? Because I know Mr. Moose had said that's one of the things they were waiting on. Have we completed that? Because he, my understanding is that they are holding or were going to get $500,000 from the state, and they were waiting for the environmental assessment.
It's my understanding, and Mr. Ricky, you're welcome to correct me if I'm wrong, but that's the part of the county's responsibility regarding what they have to do as far as their part of it, and that Jonathan Marshall, I think, is a part of that. And you're welcome to come to the podium. And we do not want to put you on the spot tonight. If that's a question you cannot answer, that's okay. We can bring that back to the business meeting if you're not real sure.
I am not real sure on that part of it. We met, I think it was Thursday of last week, Friday, excuse me, Friday of last week, with Barry and his staff, Mr. Moose and his staff, and talked about that, and that particular issue did not come up. It is currently in committee in the legislature, but as far as where the project is, it's going into design now, the final design phase of it. It is being looked at for bidding in spring of 2012. It's on pace. The big thing now is to get the funds released. He did not specifically say it was tied to the environmental study.
Because he had made a -- because I thought we were waiting for them to have put it on their agenda for DOT to put it on their agenda to appropriate it, and that's why I raised my hand and said, "Hey, have you put it on the agenda yet?" And then that's when he made a comment about the environmental impact study. So I will make sure we've got all our ducks in a row.
Well, let me make one clarification, because the only thing that was asked of us is that we sent that letter requesting that they, you know, that we are requesting the use of the funds, and it's a cooperative effort between us and the county. So I know that the Commissioner Chair signed off on it. I signed off on it. It went to Senator Hartzell. So as far as I was concerned, we had done everything on our end. Anything else left on their end, you know, would not be within our control. I know they referenced an environmental study. I'm assuming that's what you're talking about, but that's something that would be done on their end, not anything we would have anything to do with.
Right. The design engineers have done quite a bit of that already, including both soils and structures, so I don't know that there's any things out there that are hanging fire at the moment. Mr. Moose did suggest that, and he was talking to Jonathan Marshall at the time, did suggest that the county make, or rather, approach Senator Hartzell and other legislators again just so that they would apply pressure and remind everybody. We were told we were on the list, as you just said, Mrs. Carpenter, but he said anything that can be done to sort of move that along would be a good idea.
And we have done everything on our end that was asked of us to do.
Yep.
Okay.
Are you good?
Okay.
Mr. Kiger?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Kelly, just to make sure I'm following you correctly, because you may have said this, and I just didn't quite understand, Hickory Ridge Middle, the 131-137 that's now on the budget balance, we're leaving for bills that are still being paid, or that's a little seed money for the road?
A little bit. There's a couple of things that we have worked with the county that we guys are not bringing in, that they've left that money available for us. There's the campus sisters, the storage buildings, the stain and stuff, and there's just a couple of little things that the county board agreed with, and they've left those dollars for us. But others you can ask, if it's not on the list, if they had to --
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, we will keep Ms. Klutz, and we will move on to the audit report, which is your 4.2. Tell me when you're there.[848.19][848.19](Coughs). You know, I have to laugh. This takes us just a little bit longer than I thought it would. Are you there, Ms. Klutz? And are you ready?
Give me just one second, please.
Board members, are you there? You've been there? Okay.
Okay. I'd like to introduce Mr. Mike Wyke to you. Come on up. And he's going to present our audit report to us. He's from Mike Anderson Smith and Wyke. And I'm getting something on. Hmm. Can I just hang closer? Yeah. Okay. I did not give you a hard copy of your audit report, because I know you guys read them over and over and over, but you may -- I did, I did give you access to our website where you can access 10 years of our audit reports and pretty graphs and those kind of things. If you truly do want a hard copy, I am happy to provide you a hard copy, so just let me know. Otherwise, you can access those on our website. And so I will turn this over to Mr. Wyke, and if you have questions for me or him, I will certainly be happy to answer those.
I just want to know if that was meant to be a facetious remark.[940.43][940.43](Laughter).
Not, not at all.[944.12][944.12](Laughter).
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Dr. Shepherd, pleased to be here tonight, like Ms. Klutz has stated, to present to you the audit report for Cabarrus County Schools for the year ending June 30th, 2011. I'm going to briefly summarize the information. If you have any questions, feel free to interrupt me, but again, I will try to be brief in my presentation. As Ms. Klutz referred to, you have an electronic copy of the bound financial report. This financial report is really divided into three sections. The first section, about 10 pages, is the management's discussion and analysis, and this is a summary prepared by management of the entire financial report. The next 45 pages is the actual financial statements, and that's the numbers or the meat of the report. And the next 15 pages or so is the compliance section of the report. And really, from our perspective as independent auditors, there's two audits. One is on the financial statement portion, the numbers portion, and the other on the compliance portion. So on those reports, on the whole financial report, we issue four reports from the independent CPAs. The first one is on the financial statements. I'm pleased to report that we issued an unqualified opinion, which is the highest level assurance that we can issue on a set of financial statements. And essentially, what that means is that we noted no items that would cause us to modify our opinion or to qualify our opinion. So it's commonly referred to as a clean audit report, so pleased to report on that. In the compliance section of the report, there's three individual reports on the compliance that we test with applicable laws and regulations. One is on the overall financial statements, one is on major state programs, and one is on major federal programs. On all three of those reports, we were able to issue an unqualified or clean audit report also, so just wanted to point that out. And this year, we tested quite a bit of the funding of Cabarrus County Schools. The major programs that we test rotate in and out on a periodic basis, and with the ERA funds that were received this year, it required us to test probably 70% of your federal funds as a major programs. So just to let you know that there was a large amount of the funds tested in detail. So it's really quite an accomplishment to have unqualified opinions and no findings on any of these compliance tests that we had. Now I'm going to turn to, I think, an electronic copy that we have here on the display and hit a few items on it. Again, just sort of hitting the highlights of the financial report. On this page, it's a summary of the general fund position of the board, and if you're like most districts that we audit, this is probably the most important thing that you look at, your cash position and your fund balance within the general fund. And this report reads from right to left, going from June 30th through 9, 10, and 11. So it's showing a steady and continual increase in your cash position, and really, your fund balance increases almost the exact same amount in line with your cash increase. And from what we've been telling all of our districts, that's what we really want to see in these economic times, because back in the 9-10 year, that's when your state funding really started dropping, and we started getting additional ERA funds from the federal government, but really not sure when those are going to run out. Well, we know when this round is going to run out, but is there going to be another round? So we've been trying to emphasize the importance to all the districts to grow your fund balance in years 10, 11, year 11, 12, try to grow that if it possible. And right now, it looks like 12, 13 is going to be the really difficult year that you need to plan for. So it looks like we're doing a good shape in that regards. Then I'm going to skip down and look at some summarization of the school food service fund. This is another area that I think is pretty important to board members as a whole, in my opinion, probably second behind the operations of the general fund from a financial perspective. What this report shows, again, reading from right to left, is that the income has essentially been growing over the past three years, and it shows your revenues by categorizations, and it shows that your food sales revenue has been steadily going down. But in contrast to that, your monies from the federal government have been steadily going up at a greater pace than the decrease in food sales. And really, what that's from is due to these economic times, your increase in your free reduce rates. Because what you typically see in a school district is as that free reduce rate rises, your profitability increases because you get more money from the reimbursement than what you're typically going to get on a charged meal or a paid meal. So that's really, from our perspective, just right in line from what we would expect to see in these economic times, and that relationship makes some perfect common sense to us. The next thing I'm going to do is skip up to, I think, page two of this document. This is a two-page letter that we are required to issue as the independent certified public accountants, and it's really a required communications letter, and it summarizes items that we are required by our professional standards to report to you, the governing board of the Board of Education. The first item is just a little one-sentence item that talks about the plan, scope, and timing of the audit. It simply states that everything went as planned and scheduled. That may seem like an insignificant comment, but this was our first year as auditors for the Board of Education, and I can tell you, when you come in for a first-year audit and everything runs exactly as planned, that's a pretty significant accomplishment, and that everyone in the district should be proud of that. Let me see, just hit on a few of the highlights. It discusses if we had any difficulties encountered during the audit. That would be if we had a difficulty or we had a difference of professional opinion with anyone in the school district. We had no such items, so pleased to report that. The next item discusses corrected or uncorrected misstatements, and what that refers to is when we come in to audit the actual numbers portion of the school board, we're giving a set of trial balances. And what this says is that when the trial balances that we were given when we first started our audit were significantly or substantially the same as the trial balances when we left. There were no adjusting journal entries that we made that have a material effect on the financial statements. On the next page, it discusses disagreements with management. Again, there were no disagreements that we had with anyone in the management of Cabarrus County Schools. It discusses if there were any required consultations with other CPAs, and to our knowledge, there were no instances of an accounting treatment of a complex transaction where the board had to consult with another accounting firm for how to treat that item, almost like you had a second opinion from a doctor. So all in all, from our perspective, the audit went really well. Very thankful to Ms. Klutz and her staff. When we come in for the audit, we give a seven-page letter requesting items that we expect to have available for us when we do our audit, and this is one seven-page letter at the compliance section before year-end and one after year-end, and everything that we asked for, they had anything and everything waiting for us and available. And any of the departments that we talked with throughout our testing, they were all open, and I felt they gave us full disclosure, and if you get any information that we asked for, we're appreciative of that.
I will open up the floor for discussion, and I will begin with Mr. Kiger's side. Any comments or questions?
Thank you. No, just, I guess, job well done to Kelly and her department, and thank you for all your efforts. It's good to know that we can withstand the scrutiny. You know, there's a lot of systems. If you, you don't have to read very far to find that there's a lot of problems out there, and we don't have it, and that's good to know. And so my hat's off to you and your department. I do want to ask one very brief question, and I can't move my mouse. There's a slide, it was when you were talking about the food balance?
Yes.
Food, I guess it's Slide 11 on our, under revenues, where it says food sales and federal, and this may be an obvious question, but the food sales, that's our students paying cash for food in our cafeterias, and then the federal is the difference between whatever that reduced rate is and what we get reimbursed?
That, the food sales is the money that's charged to the students, and on a reduced rate, it would be the sales for the reduced, and the federal part would be the amount that you receive from the federal government on a reduced meal. You also get money from the federal government on a full-pay meal, just a marginal amount of money, and would be the money you get from the federal government on a free lunch. There's three categorizations of a lunch. You can have full pay, reduced, or free. And the federal government gives the district reimbursement for all three categories, even if it's a full pay.
Hmm, okay. I was not aware of that.
And then, but the --
We can't afford it. I can't tell you that. Well, it does. I just wasn't aware that on a full-paying meal, we still get a reimbursement from the federal government.
Yeah. And if you take the amount that you get from the federal government on a full pay and add that to the amount that the student pays, that's still less than the amount you get on a free lunch.
Okay.
And that's why as the free and rich rate goes up, the probability goes up.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I was reading that one page correctly.
Before I move to Ms. Carpenter, Kelly, that does make me think about something. Has that changed since they've mandated the difference in what we have to prepare in the lunchrooms with the fat-free, sugar-free, all the mandates that's come down following the federal guidelines? I was just curious. That may not have anything -- okay, it's okay. If you can't answer it, that's okay. I just wondered if they had made up some differences because of those mandates of what we have to serve now cost us more money. That would be a good question, and maybe if we could look into that before the business meeting. It may not have had anything to do with it, but I'd be curious if they're now reimbursing a little bit more because of those requirements that they've placed on us about what type of foods we serve now, and they're more expensive. That's okay. Business meeting. Okay, thank you. All right, Ms. Carpenter, comments or questions?
Only question I have is, are we still required by the state to maintain a certain percentage, or they recommend us to keep a certain balance in the fund balance?
Fun balance? Yeah, that's a very difficult question. They, on schools, they really don't come out anymore with a certain percentage that you're supposed to keep on there. It's so difficult on a school because with your federal and state monies, you know, it's sort of run flows in and out the whole time. You really don't build up any cash reserves on those. What I can tell you from the districts that we look at, you are probably in very adequate shape. You're maybe not the most fun balance as a percentage of any of the districts we see, but you're definitely not in a situation of, some districts are going to be in very bad shape in 12, 13, where they haven't been building a little bit of reserve in the fund balance.
But there's no rule of thumb to say 8%, 12%, something like that?
No, because there's really not. It's just very, it's across the board more so. I really don't do any work on towns or counties, but in most cases, when you see those percentages, the LGC, the Local Government Commission, is really referring to cities and counties in most instances.
Okay. Okay.
Mr. Furr?
I'll just make a brief comment. I'd like to join Blake for congratulating you guys and all the departments down here for the job you did. And also, when we got on the first page and when it got to the summary D right there, where it says no findings for the third consecutive year, that's encouraging as well, and this is good information, and you guys are doing a good job.
Ms. Monnet?
Ditto to what they just said, because I know accounting is way out of my ken, but I did have a question about the net income from the food service, which was considerable, $336,000. How do you, what do you do? Do you put that into the account to start the next year? Do we consider lowering the rates of the lunches? What happens? I mean, that's quite a jump from what it's been in the past.
Yeah, that's cash within that fund, and it goes into the next year's of food service program, so it's carried over. And that's really a very good question, because the federal government has restrictions as to how much cash you can hold in school food service, unlike your general fund where there's really no guidance as to how much you should hold. The federal government puts a cap on that, so if you get over or get close to a portion where you have three months' worth of operating cash, then you have to develop a plan to reduce that, and probably by lowering your meal prices.
Grace, I'd just like to add, in school food service, easy for me to say, in years where, and they're a self-supporting fund, and in years where the state actually does give us a pay increase, and I know we're not likely to have that happen, but when that does happen, they have to pay, they have to fund their own pay increase. And generally, when that happens, school for food service has a difficult time funding their pay. They also have a difficult time -- They also have a difficult time funding their benefits increases, because they have to do that on their own. So even though that does seem like a little bit of an increase there or profit there, it's going to take every bit of that, if there's any kind of health insurance increase or retirement or anything like that. It looks like it's more than it is, and you guys, I know you don't like for us to come and ask for increases in the lunch prices more than every three years or so, so it's best to let that sit there and let us not have to come ask for a paying or a price increase rather than when we need it for those other things.
Okay. Mr. Shue?
Thank you, Madam Chair. All I can say is ditto to what all the other board members have said. It's an excellent report. What Tim said about the three years with no findings, that's excellent, and a lot of credit goes to Tina Farmer as well, you know, our child nutrition director. She has really, in my opinion, done an excellent job of child nutrition, and of course, Kelly, you and your staff, and Tina and her staff, you know, it's a collective effort. We all work for the common good to get as much as we can get out of what we're doing and get the good results, and so I was very well pleased with the results. Thank you very much.
Okay, that, okay, sure.
Just one question. When we're talking about the fund balance, has this board ever thought about possibly putting something, a policy in place saying we don't want to go below a certain level of the fund balance? Has that ever been discussed? Because basically, the board of county commissioners, Grace knows, basically, they had a policy put in place saying, "We're not going to go below a certain level." But I don't, I didn't know if they were, if that had ever been discussed.
I know it's not been discussed while I've been on the board. I guess we'd have to take a look at the board policy, maybe that's something we could send back to the policy committee for them to look at. I don't think we even have a policy that addresses that, and since we're not evidently mandated, like the LGC is for city and counties, I'm not sure how we would come to some type of determinant number, you know, for that to be figured out. But if it's something that you think that actually maybe our board attorney and the policy committee could take a look at.
I mean, but to keep, and basically, the reason I'm even mentioning that, when times get, I mean, sometimes boards will spin, 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 and then when the hard times come, you don't have the money. And this way, you're protecting that so that doesn't happen, so when something really, really bad happens, you do have that money. And like I say, keeping somebody from saying, "Oh, well, you've got it," and just going to get it.
I think it's been so long since we've been in that position. No one's actually thought of that, but I'll be glad to put that on our little shopping list. How's that? Okay, good. The only question I have is, there's a notation made about the outstanding checks, that there was quite a few outstanding checks prior to 2009. Has that been rectified? It has. Great answer, great. Other than that, thank you very much. We appreciate the report, and thank you for being here tonight. Okay, board members, while you are moving to 4.3 with our QSCB update, we will have Mr. Lynn Wiki to the podium, and I'd like to take a minute to recognize our county manager in the office, Mr. Mike Downs, and thank him for being here with us tonight. We know he's had a busy day today. The county commission had their work session as well earlier, so we appreciate you being in the audience tonight. And Mr. Wiki, are you going to start with the status report or the second one?
The status report, Madam Chair.
Okay, board members, let me know when you are there. It's the first one. Okay, good. I think we're all there.
Thank you. This report is a little bit dated from the standpoint that it doesn't reflect the most recent bidding that took place in the last 10 days. So I'll just touch on the fact that things are going along well. The bids have come in on those projects, they were all favorable bids, and I'll get into the detail of that in a moment. So this report, again, just shows you where we're at with current spending on the projects, and a little, to some degree, where money has been moved from one place to the next as approved by DPI and USO. So it's really for reference that I offer you that. I would like to go to the next report, which is the milestones report. I think that's a separate document.
Board members, are you there? And remember to X out with the small x, not the big X. The big X gets you in a lot of trouble.
Okay. Is everyone there?
I know, I'm very impressed. Your board chair is the only one that had trouble with that one night. Is everyone good? Okay.
Okay, so this is the blue headlined, if you will, report. And the thing that's, I was doing a little calculating here, basically, we have 39 projects listed, and some have been deleted, and I'm not counting those, but of those that are still active, we've already gotten 10 of those projects bid and underway or completed. So about 25% of the work is done. I didn't take any calculations in terms of budget. For the most part, as I say, we've been holding our own. I will tell you that three projects that I'll speak to later in the evening that were bid, which was Mount Pleasant Middle School Technology Project, the work at Central Cabarrus High School for the window and door replacement, as well as the office renovations for security purposes, and then the roof replacement at J. Ann Freese, all came in either at or below budget. So we're doing very well there, and I think that's good news, bodes well for the future, hopefully. We did get a lot of bidding taking place on those projects, which, you know, a lot of interest was shown, and I think the pencils were pretty sharp. So that said, these dates, they move a little bit depending on a particular project's, plus the things that, you know, create problems with the design team or not, and you'll see those, the dates of bid openings and construction starts change a little bit, but for the most time, most part, we really are working for a large push this spring and summer for construction. So you'll see a lot of the projects bid in November, December, and January. Any questions?
Lynn, I just want clarification. Is there anything we need to do tonight to handle any of those bids that took place, or any of that information, or is that next?
That is next.
That will be next? Okay, good. So then I'll open up the floor for discussion, and I will begin with Mr. Kiger.
Thank you. I meant to email because I knew this would be a very simple question and answer and forgot, but the blue lines through, what does that represent? The highlight, the individual items that are highlighted are blue?
Those are, I'm looking at them quickly. I was going to say, I thought most of those were either completed or status changed. And because normally, when Lee puts this together for us, he's looking at things that are either changing, you know, status-wise or, yeah, or date-wise, something's changed.
Okay, well, and that would explain, because I saw one that said deleted and that's blue, and another one that's not, and I thought, well, either the... But that would mean maybe that something was deleted in the previous month.
Exactly.
The other one had, you know, like the Hickory Ridge Wireless was deleted a long time ago, so that would make sense.
Rotation, full color, just one school, and then the next school's a different color. So they're categorized all blue, and the next school's white.
Oh, to differentiate.
To differentiate, and that's great, yeah.
That could be the case.
Yeah, yeah, that looks like maybe that's it. Okay.
We'll get clarification for the business meeting.
Yes, we will.
How's that? Okay. Any other questions or comments, Blake? Okay, Ms. Carpenter?
I'm just saying, I just want that cafeteria at Concord done, and the windows at Central done. As long as those get done, that's a priority, and it looks like they're moving along, so...
Mr. Furr? Okay, Ms. Monnet? Mr. Shue? Okay, great. Thank you, Lynn.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next we will move to 5.1. This is the approval of the budget amendments. Board members, let me know when you're there. And we will have Ms. Kelly Klutz back to the podium. Everyone good? Okay. Your first budget... I killed your mic, I'm sorry.
Sorry. Your first budget amendment is your state budget amendment. These are connectivity funds that we were expecting, $225,000. Any questions on that one?
Board members, comments or questions? I'll just look for a head shake or a nod. Hearing none? Move forward.
Second one is your local funds. We're doing a reclass on, we just felt like we needed to give Chris Lauder some operating funds in his position, so we moved some dollars there. The next one was the donation of $25,000 from Carolina's Healthcare Systems, recorded those funds. And then the next one is the reclass of that, those dollars for addition of 15 buses and the increase in ridership for the buses that we added at the beginning of the school year. So those are your, the local budget amendments.
Board members, comments or questions on this sheet? Hearing none? Go ahead, key up, please.
The amount for Mr. Lauder, is that, I mean, how did we come up with the number?
We actually normally, when we do allocations for cabinet members that have operations accounts, it's usually, I'm thinking, it's eight or $10,000, and he came in, and we've been cutting that over the last few years as we reduced our budget, and he came in, he said, "I don't need that much, just give me $5,000." And I'm like, "Okay, sold, got it."
I mean, because on the surface, it just looks like a pretty low number, but...
It is a low number.
With nothing to compare it to, I just didn't know.
I didn't complain. I said, "Sold, you got it."
Well, I'm not either.
Did you ask him it was not for negotiation later either? Any other comments or questions? Hearing none? We'll move to the third page.
Okay, we have federal here. We're adding a grant that we received, the content curriculum continuum grant, and also we're doing a small reclass.
Board members, comments or questions?
And then your capital, this is a large one. This is pretty much what you saw on the construction report, where we're reducing your Hickory Ridge, your AT Island, Bogart, and Patriots. Those are your first four budget amendments. Those funds are going back to the county as expected. And then the last one, two, three are QSCB, and those are things that Lynn Wiki has reported to you in his monthly reports in the past, and they're just showing up on a budget amendment now. We actually have the DPI documentation in our hands, and everything's fine, and so now that's why they're showing up on this document, where you've seen them many times before.
Board members, comments or questions? Hearing none?
Kelly, I just have one quick question, and it's because I had a phone call. Someone was watching our tape, and they did not get it that we have to return what monies are not used on a project. I know you can do a brief overview of that, but the question that they were really wanting to know was, before we actually do that, do we make sure that anything and everything that could be used at that facility, the money is there for, instead of returning it, and then having to meet, you know, some of the things that's happened with some of the other schools that they were promised things, didn't get it? I tried to explain that those budgets, the money wasn't there to begin with, but when they're hearing monies returned to the county, and then they don't have some things that they thought they were promised, that didn't make sense to them. Can you give us a little bit of an idea and explain that a little bit better?
Okay. Everything that we know of, that we're aware of, we have in our budget or on our list, Lynn Wiki has a list, and I actually literally have that list over at my desk. So Blake was just asking about those few items and why that $100,000 or $50,000 was remaining there. The items that we are aware of, we are working diligently with the county to make sure that those things are taken care of. If it's something six months later that comes up and we're not aware of the need, we can't anticipate putting that in the budget, but if those are, if they're things that we know of and it's in the budget, then we're taking care of it.
So the answer is, if they didn't put it in the initial budget...
If you didn't put it in the budget and you're not making us aware of the need...
Right.
We can't, we're not mind readers, but if we know about it, it's in our plan, it's in our budget, we can take care of it.
I was telling Mr. Wiki, I explained that with working with the construction standards, we're doing a lot of those post-construction, where we're seeing that items that are missed are being added, so that when we make these pre-budget lists, that more things and more things and more things are added, so that these facilities don't get to the point to say, you know, "That should have been in there, we missed it," or, you know, whatever. But the construction standards should take care of a lot of this in the future. But they didn't get it that there were some things that they thought should have been a part of some of the newer school facilities, but yet we were returning money to the county, which didn't make sense to them.
If it wasn't in there in the first place, you know, we can't really go back and say, "By the way..."
Right, great, okay. Board members, any other comments or questions on page number three? Hearing none? Any other? Kelly, are you good?
I'm sorry. Actually, I have to cut in one more.
Yes.
Fund eight?
Yes.
Sorry, I have Fund Eight, two more small grants, Verizon Grant through communities and schools, and the Haze Trust Grant through communities and schools.
Board members, comments or questions? Hearing none? Okay, may I place this on the consent agenda? A shake of all heads? Great. Thank you, Kelly. That should make you happy. Right, okay. All right, board members, let's move to Jason, Mr. Van Huukellem. We will have 5.2. This is the approval of the high school magnet proposal discussion. Board members, let me know when you're there. You're waiting? Everyone good? Okay, Jason.
Okay. You guys got to see this at the board retreat, and we did have some additions to the projections, if you want to scroll to page four. Mr. Lynn Wiki added facilities upgrades, which was not in there before, to that first chart for cost projections, $85,000 for STEM and $55,000 for Concord High School. This was based, I believe, on 11 classrooms remodeling and working with 11 classrooms, in particular with science, science labs, which would be a heavy component of both of these programs. Then with technology, we were trying to figure out a good way to include technology with the cost projections, understanding that in tight budget times, you know, we might have to pare some things down. So you'll notice that we have a general technology line item at $25,000 for each of the programs. And then we've asterisked the one-to-one request from the STEM High School, which would be a one-to-one laptop per child request that STEM would really like to have and would feel that that would really enhance the program, and two mobile carts requests from Concord High School. But those numbers are not included in the projections below. So if we were to itemize and take off something because of budget constraints, those would probably be the first things that could go. They're not necessary for the program to move forward, if that makes sense.
Before I open the floor for discussion, I just want to make all of you aware, I know at the retreat, we discussed making sure that this was placed before the budget committee to have a discussion, and they actually meet this coming Thursday. So if anyone has any questions regarding what the budget committee is looking at or reviewing, or if they have a recommendation, they will only meet this Thursday, so maybe you can bring that information back to us at the business meeting. If you have additional comments or questions tonight, we can do that, or we can just actually move this to the action item portion of the agenda for the business meeting. Okay? Good? Mr. Kiger?
Yeah, that's fine. As I have shared with you, Madam Chair, that I will not be here, so if you could indulge me in at least making some comments that I wanted to make about this tonight, since I won't be able to do it then. You want to start at the other end, you want me to go ahead? Okay. And a couple of these, we just, we talked about it at the retreat, but I wanted to make sure I've got the, go down on the revenue side?
Okay.
The 10 students in 2012, and then 20 and 13? The 20 means that we have the 10, and then we get 20 more, or we keep the 10 and add 10 more?
We keep the 10 and add 10.
Okay, okay.
It's based on 10 additional students per cohort, every year.
And to me, that's a reasonable, I believe that's a reasonable expectation. And then the start items are wants, but we can start the program without them, is that what you mean by that?
That's correct, yeah. If we were to have a wish list, that would be on our wish list. We'd love to have those, one-to-one initiative at the STEM High School, and two mobile carts at Concord High School. But they are not necessary to do the programs if we cannot afford them.
Okay, so the 508, basically, if we want to include that, we need to add the 85 and the, another...
Eighty-five.
And another eighty-five.
Yes, sir.
And let's see. Well, the second column, full-time coordinator, one... Well, the second column, full-time coordinator, 150 is starred, so we need to add that too? On, on the one-to-one?
That's correct, that, so if you have a one-to-one at the STEM, every cohort of freshmen coming in is going to be, would be issued a laptop computer. So that would be an ongoing cost, not just an initial cost. And so, you know, it's hard to judge those numbers, because you, we're hoping to start with 85 kids that first freshman year, but go to 120 or so. But you have, so you have about $1,000 per kid for a laptop, and then you also have some other additional costs that you're going to need for, for that technology as well.
Gotcha.
So as the, as the program progresses, it'd be like 85 the first year, maybe 100 the second year, depending on the number of students that would come into the program.
Okay, and again, I apologize for taking time up for this, but I, I did want to make the, the comment that, you know, I've thought about this quite a bit since the retreat. And one of the things, you know, you can give, you know, there's a lot of debate and discussion about charter schools and, and what their impact has been, there's a lot of discussion about private schools. But the fact of the matter is, is, you know, competition in the marketplace spurs you to new ideas and new heights and makes you do things that, well, you might have to get outside your comfort zone. And to me, this is 100% reacting to the marketplace. If, if charter schools and the cap is increasing, you know, we're out there competing and we've got to supply an education that's second to none. And if, if we can stand up toe-to-toe, whether it's a private school, and whether it's kids that get homeschooled, and trust me, I, I understand all of that. I've told a lot of people, the great thing about where we live, people get to decide and do what's best for them and their family, you know? You're not told what to do here. But, in this particular case, there's a lot of government entities that'll use the word "investment," and I think that was the word we used at the retreat. And you sort of have to snicker and scoff at that, because what that really means is spending. And, and I think we've all seen what's happening with spending and it's out of control. But in this particular case, I think investment's the proper term. We're, we're going to invest in a program that we're actually responding to the marketplace to bring something that we think we can do as good or better than anybody else down the street or around the block. And so, I, I understand totally if you just scroll down and say, "Wow, wait a minute, this looks expensive," or "The revenue might not match up with what we got." But the good news is, you, I think you've gone conservative on the revenue side of the numbers that we're going to attract.
Right.
And hopefully, we don't find out that we're somehow unrealistic on the expense side. I mean, you, you better go ahead and put in the one-to-one or whatever. If we're going to do it, we got to do it right. And it's probably not that far away for every kid walking in the doors getting a laptop, whether they're in this program or not. We may end up going textbooks on laptops for, I mean, you know, that's just- That's where we are and probably where we're going. So I, to me, I would include that number and then make a decision based on that. And of course, I, I don't, you know, when we both have that discussion, I, I won't be here. But I, I, again, truly, I believe it's an investment, I think it does help our school system, I think it helps us as a county and a whole produce better students. And I, I, for one, support the program and, and, and hope that we get it off on the right foot and do a good job with it.
Well, one of the things that I see, I have a, I want equity with all our students. And when you look about the laptops, I'm with you. I think we're looking at where we're, we're going to see textbooks and everything on laptops. And I want the equity with all our students. I don't want to see us maybe give laptops to only 85 of our students when we've got 28,000 students in our system. And so, we may get to the point where we have to do it, and it's going to be more equitable for us to have, instead of buying textbooks, it's going to be outdated very quickly, and us have to rebuy books where we can do it on a laptop and get them just like this. It's going to be a lot more economical for us and be better for the students, and not just for 85 students. You know, this may be something that's more realistic and be equitable for everyone. And this is something that it's, it's going to be an investment in the future for all of our students. But I think it's something that we're, we are going to have to look at. And I agree with Blake 100%, we are going to have to be competitive for all our students because we have to be in the marketplace. And I think this is, is something that we are going to have to, to do, to, to be competitive.
There's one good thing about sitting toward the middle, you get to hear everyone's ideas and, and thoughts, and fortunately for me, I've got Mr. Kiger here who just puts everything out there, so, he's so perfect, and, and I agree with, you know, even though he's from Georgia, he, he does a pretty good job expressing himself, but- And, never mind. No, I'm, I'm totally in favor, but I'm anxious to see what the Budget Committee, their insight, input into the situation. But I appreciate the, both of you, what you, what you had to say.
I was also impressed with your comments, Mr. Kiger. Some of you may have watched a report that was on television this weekend about charter schools and so forth, and unfortunately, those reports make public schools in general appear very, very bad. And they bump the bad ones in with the good ones, and it's really good to see that our system is recognizing that competition is out there and people are getting very aware and concerned about what the education is that their children are getting. And this, this county, I think, has a history of stepping to the, up to the plate. And I think that you folks, I wasn't there to get any of the accolades, so I'll have to say, I think it's wonderful that you have gotten this far planning this, I think it's a good step forward.
She always does me like that, I declare, she's always, but that's all right to him, no problem. Well, you know, I'm going to tell you something, Blake, you did an excellent job on your assertion there of what you think, I think that's good. I'm looking at it from a little different angle though, folks. And, you know, we talked about this at the retreat, Dr. Shepherd, and one of the things, I guess, that bothers me about this more than anything, is that we're looking at an initial cost upwards of $700,000 that obviously we don't have unless it comes out of our fund balance, which is basically our savings. And that would be okay if, you know, we didn't make such drastic budget cuts last year. We got people that lost their jobs, we got people that cut from eight hours to six hours, we got people that, you know, that are hurting in our community, that belong to this school district. And even though, like I say, I agree with everything you said, Blake, you know, it's a great idea, but I just can't see taking that kind of money from our fund balance, knowing that we've got all these other needs out here, that we have cut some of these cases, I mean, some of these budget items to the bone. I think of just some of them, for example, you know, we talked about custodians, some custodians lost their jobs, teacher assistants lost their jobs. And what we still have was greatly reduced. And savings is for a rainy day. And, you know, I don't think we've got a rainy day right yet. I mean, we're doing good, our school system is, is doing good. And, and, and like I say, I don't mean to put the rain on the parade, folks, that's not what I'm doing. I just want you to think, though, about the other things that we cut from the budget already, those people are still hurting. If we're going to take money from the fund balance, then in my opinion, we should go there and try to help some of those people that's already part of us. And, but anyway, you know, that's just my thoughts on it. And, you know, the ongoing costs, if it goes, Jason, as you, as you project, as it goes and we get 10, and then 10 more, and then 10, and on and on and on, that's all well and good, but that, and it may very well exceed that, which would also be good. But still, it don't eliminate that initial 600, 700,000 we got to throw out there. And, you know, that's just my thoughts, you know? I'm not up for reelection, I'm not, you know, any of that, you know? I'm just trying to speak my piece, you know, as far as the way I feel about it. And each one of us has that individual right. But I just can't see doing another, when we just did the two at Coltrane Webb and J. and Freeze, the IB STEM programs there, doing another expansion program this quick after that, especially with the uncertainty of 2012, 13, as the auditor that was just here a little earlier said, maybe it, not so good a year. And I'd like for us to take that in consideration now, before that time gets here, and look real strongly at this, you know, maybe for even another year, and see what happens before we jump into spending this kind of money right off, up front. So that's my piece, and I didn't mean to make anybody upset, but if I did, I apologize for it.
Well, you didn't make anybody upset, but I'm going to be right down the middle. So the first thing is, I know that you and Ms. Carpenter are both on the Budget Committee, and I hope you'll both be able to be there on Thursday, since you have a little bit of different views. The one thing I really want to say, and I think Mr. Downs would even agree with this, we have to step up to the plate for how we educate our kids here, because that's what businesses look for when they come here. When they're looking at Cabarrus County, they want to know what is offered to their kids that are coming here, you know, what our education system looks like, where we're going. And what we've started is a great start, but they have nowhere else to go in that next level. And that's really where they receive the next level, is at the high school, you know? That's, that's where they receive the majority of these, these programs. And there's so much more available to them at the college level if they receive it at the high school level. So what we've started is an initiation phase, but we're not finishing it. So we're not giving them the better of the both worlds of even having had these programs put in place. Yes, it's expensive, but I know receiving these kids back from why they're leaving us is because we don't have these programs in place. That's why they leave us, is to be able to be a part, a participant in a lot of these different programs. So I think it is an investment, as Blake stated, that's a, a great work, it is an investment. But it's where we have to go if we're going to get these kids to the level that they need to be, to be more competitive, to get them more college-ready for the ones that are preparing for that, because we're kind of leaving them hanging with what we've started and not completing that, and that's how I see it. And, and, and more so, it's more important to the county because it's a selling factor for businesses that relocate here, because we've never been able to offer anything like that. And it is competitive. And charter schools, I don't think we've done a good job of getting out there that charter schools, they, they are not mandated for the requirements they are, they don't, they do not deal with EC populations, child nutrition, transportation, you know, they're able to do a lot more for their students that we are not, because we're mandated to provide those other services. So I think it's a balance, and I think it's definitely, the word "investment" is exactly the picture of this, and I'm, I'm really looking forward to see what the Budget Committee says. And I see both sides, but I definitely see that when we started this, we had a goal, we had a reason, and to not get it to the high school level where it's most prominent and most important, because that advances them to give them a, a heads-up and an advantage for their college career. I think you would agree with that. So is there any other comments or questions, other than what will come back from the Budget Committee, Ms. Carpenter?
Well, I would like to clarify, okay? I, I do want to clarify one thing, because I am more in line, I am in favor of the STEM program, I do want to clarify that. And I, I do clarify, because I'm a money person, y'all all know that. And I, I want to know where the money's coming from, and the only reason that I'm really would be in favor of it is, and it was bought up, and I don't know if we found out whether, there was a grant that was possibly going to be available for one of our schools that was bought up last year. And it was if the high school possibly could become the STEM program. And that's where I'm concerned. And hopefully, we might, could do that, and that would maybe help bring our planetarium back in to play. And that's why I would support that, and that would bring some money in where we wouldn't have to go to fund balance. And I would much rather us get the money from somewhere else. I don't like going into savings accounts for something, and I'll put that on the record. I would rather get the money from somewhere else, because we have the savings account for savings. And so, I would rather get it from somewhere else, or from what we've been doing in the Budget Committee, trying to get it from other things. And I would much rather put these people back to work before we did this. So I want that clarified. It is, you know, I would rather do that first, before we leave. But we do want to give the children what they need, but again, I want to look at all sources before we dip into a fund balance.
And I want to, I want clarification here, and then this needs to come back from the Budget Committee, because I think people don't really understand, we write a check for those charter school, school, children every month. So those kids returning is revenue that comes back to us. We're writing those checks for those children that are not within our system, that are at those schools, period. So if they return, that is money that's coming back to us. So the general fund is only a part of the picture, you know? What investment number is, may look a little differently. And so I want that, I want people to understand, we write that check for that. Kelly, I'm sure you understand that more than anybody, we've had that discussion many times. So the Budget Committee really needs to talk about that, and how much that costs us. And we've already had students to return for what we've already started, so I don't see them leaving, I see more returning. It's become much more popular than we thought it was, we thought it would be something that would be slow to come back to us, but parents are very, very much happy with the, what we've started and where we're going. And we've told them that we're going to continue this at the next level, so that they have a reason to, to continue this. So we've committed at some point and some level to get them to the high school level, when we do it is just a question. But I would like for the Budget Committee to make sure that they understand the grant was talked about at the retreat, I'm not sure if y'all have had time to actually look into that, but that would be a, a good answer as well. But, you know, I also want people to understand that we're writing that check for those charter school students every month, anyway. So, you know, whether they come back or not, that's still a cost to us.
Could we get that information too?
And that needs to come from the Budget Committee, I think actually, we did that at one point in time, you gave us how much money we spend for the charter school students, would you be able to do that?
If y'all could recheck on that before, that would be, we had asked at that, at the retreat-
We did.
-to try to get some more information to see, because that too would be very helpful, if that grant-
If that grant is still available, because that could be twofold for the school, because the grant itself, but two, that was going to help to get the, the actual- Planetarium. Because I think they were looking at 200, wasn't it 200,000? I think it was 200,000. Would get that operational, and that would benefit the whole community, plus the whole, whole system. But that would help also. And so that would, but that was kind of hinging on it being a STEM, STEM system. But I am 100% in, for the STEM program. I'm not real crazy about the IB program, but the STEM I am.
And you know, I, I know you made that statement at the retreat, so I'm sure that's coming back to us at some point, but I want to remind everybody, we're in the kids' business here. What we provide for our kids is priority. You know, I, I hate that we've had to make some cuts for employees, and we've not made near the cuts that anyone else within surrounding districts have. Our Budget Committee, and both of you were a part of that, we've done a really good job preparing for what we had to do. But we're in the kids' business, and education is a priority for what we have done, and we need to prepare these kids for, for a competitive future. And we all know that these programs are extremely important, because that's why we lose them out of our system. So we, we need to remember the business that we're in. And I know, Mr. Shu, you'd like to make another comment.
Absolutely, thank you, Madam Chair. I realize that we're writing the check each month, you know, but then again, you've got to take into consideration, you know, you can't take in the middle school and the elementary school kids that's going to charter schools. That would not give us an accurate reflection of what this high school program would give. So you'd have to just get that report based on the seniors, I mean, the high school kids that are going to other private or charter schools, that kind of thing, and all, but, you know, when, when I was talking about the, the, the budget cuts and that kind of thing, I, I'm thinking, and of course, I'm glad Mr. Downs is here, you know, is representative of our county, our county manager, and, and I'm not saying this because he's here, I'm glad you're here though, Mike. But the thing is, though, you know, we've got these teachers, that we, we talk about supplements, for example. How are we ever going to get their supplements up, you know, when we are, I mean, we've got to work on that some way. We've got to work on getting our teachers, the bulk, you know, of the people that make this system work is the, you know, is our teachers, you know? They, they're the ones, they're on the firing line, you're talking about having a, a, a Class A rated school system, we're working on being a top 10 school district and all of that, and people do move here because of the school district, I realize all of that. But we've got other things that I think that we've got to work on, and, I mean, it wouldn't surprise me, you know, I'm not giving you any ideas, but it wouldn't surprise me, you know, we're going to have somewhere excess of, of whatever our fund balance is, that the county would say, "Well, look, you go back and spend some of that fund balance, and then come see us." You know, it wouldn't surprise me, you know? And, and because that's $700,000 initial outlay, when, when I, and I don't want to be redundant, but we've got to work on getting the supplements up for our people. We talk about being competitive for the kids, that's true, but we got to be competitive. And we're going to be talking a little bit, a little later on in our meeting with Ms. Auger on the, the salary study, that we're going to be trying to get approved to do that. I mean, Cabarrus County, you know, as far as the school district, we may be way behind. I imagine we probably are way behind. That's why we got positions we can't fill, because we can't be competitive. But, you know, I'm for, everything for the kids, that's what I'm here for, that's what I run for election for, was for the kids. I run for election for, was for the kids. That's true. But we've got to take care of the people that take care of us. It's the people that make the school district, not the school district that makes the people. It's the people that make the school district. And so, anyway, that's all I'm going to say about it, but you know where I stand. We'll talk about it in the Budget Committee on Thursday, and we'll just go from there. Thank you.
And actually, I would like to ask you and Carolyn both, because you know that we're paid per child. So the per diem per child, so the actual number of students we have, the more money we receive, so it only makes sense for us to try to increase our child population for our budget revenues to come in. That's how we actually deal with our teachers. Ms. Minnet?
I just wanted to say that the converse of what Lynn has said is that if you don't, as a system, begin to look in this type of direction, you will lose more students to other options. It's the competition that Blake was talking about. So I think that it's a false economy, in my opinion, not to try to find these funds for these programs, because that will increase, or maintain, or keep the students here, rather than them going to other options, which certainly is a drain on your economy.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. One last quick thing, and I understand that there's an outlay, but there's also, there's a revenue side. And unless I've done something incorrectly here, what we're talking about is three tenths of 1% over five years of our budget. So, I mean, 700,000, that sounds like a big number, and it is. But the 40 kids, I still think is a pretty conservative number of high school kids that we would pull, but that's the way you do, that's a good way to run the pro forma. Shoot low on the revenue side, be realistic on the expense side. If that number's close, you feel pretty good that you're going to exceed it, but you haven't thrown up a scenario that you just know is not likely to happen. But three tenths of 1% of our budget is what we're talking about.
Point taken. Thank you very much. The Budget Committee has their job cut out for them Thursday. Thank you, Jason. And we will actually place that item on the action portion for the business meeting. Board members, we will move to 5.3. And this is the approval of the Future Ready Core and Graduation. We'll have Dr. Colleen Sane, Mrs. Donna Smith, and Mrs. Lisa Conger to the podium, please. Board members, let me know when you're there. Everyone good? Everyone good? Okay. Will you please key up?
I'll be glad to. It feels a little strange to be here, talking about curriculum instruction, when that's Jason's job, but I have the history on this one, so if he doesn't mind, I'll start. In 2008, we began to make some changes in how we graduated students, in that we were following the state guidance on ensuring that students took a second level in a cluster of courses that were related, okay? And in the past, we had had pathways, and I'm not sure if you remember that, but pathways were related pretty much around CTE, and whether or not you took a foreign language or didn't. The course clusters that we designed included more than career and technical education. We included world languages, we included the arts, and we included a mathematics course cluster. And that's all a wonderful thing that we did, okay? In 2011, the big words that you've heard all year are Common Core and Essential Standards. That did not leave CTE out in the cold, I promise you. The State Board of Education has come back and redefined how they are expecting course clusters and clusters for graduation to be, and they've changed their reporting system significantly. I'm going to have, what's her name? I'm going to have Lisa here talk, I'm going to have Lisa here talk to you a little bit about what that means. But what I want you to know is, we're looking for permission to go back and align ourselves with the state, okay?
This summer, the State Department unveiled what will be the 2013 Essential Standards for Career and Technical Education. And when those career clusters came out, the only clusters that will be defined as clusters are career and technical education. And in 2008, when we designed our clusters, we included more things than just CTE. So now, we're in a situation that if we continue with Cabarrus County, career clusters will have difficulty with our reporting to the federal government and to the state government. So what we would like to do is continue to sequence children and work on that through a level through counseling and career development, but to change the graduation requirement to make it look like what the state is requiring through Future Ready Core.
Okay. Endow us here for moral support.
I'm the moral support. I think the summation is, we're asking that you consider placing this on the consent agenda, so that we can align locally with where the state is going. And that's simply to help us with our record-keeping and be consistent, and yet develop our plan of action, because registration for next year is coming very soon.
Okay, I will open the floor for discussion, and I will begin on Mr. Conger's side. Since you seem to be the one that can talk so much tonight.
Hey. Well, I don't know, my gut feeling is, I like it when we have something that we've developed, and we do, whether it's different from the state or not, I like that. So to go the other direction just sort of cuts against the way that I look at things. But again, this is something, I think, to me, I would trust your judgment. The three of you have been here time and again, and been able to size up the best course of action and the way to go, and this is one of the times that I think I would just, I'd go with you and trust your judgment.
Now, see, was I wrong? Ms. Carpenter?
Okay. But I'm very, because let's say, I'm... Say, oh, when I say that, I'm just wanting to know what it is we are going to be changing, because, I mean, I know we changed the criteria on the number of units that we were graduating. Is this where we're running into problem, or where are we running into the problem?
Okay, now, I want clarification before we go any further. What she's asking about is what we did with a different type of diploma that we did. What y'all are discussing is career and technical education, and us aligning what the state mandate is. So make sure we don't get confused here.
And we're discussing the traditional, regular diploma. We're not discussing anything else.
So it's nothing to do with the credit hours or anything like that?
No, ma'am.
And that's what I'm wanting to make sure, where our problem, because it sounds like we've got a problem somewhere, and we're trying to correct our problem.
Now, let me say it this way, we were over-ambitious, and we were creative in what we did. Consequently, in what the state is unrolled now, it's going to make record-keeping incredibly difficult for our Accountability Department and for people in the schools. It will also make it very difficult for us to report information to the state, and you know, we're compared on how we compare, how we report compared to other systems, and also to the federal government. I think one of the things that we need to say is that it's important that you understand that we're going to continue the push towards the cluster approach, through guidance counseling and through your career development coordinators. I think it's important to remember that. We fully believe that children should take a second level of a selection of courses in order to have a full commitment to that and have a better understanding. You really only get a, kind of a bird's-eye view when you take the first level, but it's the second and the third level that gets you into the depth and the meat of the course. What has happened is, what we're proposing is, for high school diploma, there's a level of students who are already taking four levels of math and two levels of, two levels of a foreign language, they're already there. And what we're asking is to not require those students on paper to identify their cluster. So, in, the reality is, in aligning with the state, we're not really changing what we're doing, we're changing how we are reporting and recording information.
I have complete, I'm with him. I've got complete confidence in what you'll do, and go for it, girls.
So I'm hearing that I can place this on the consent agenda without any issues. Okay, great. Thank you. And board members, I'm going to pause here for just a moment, so the cameraman can change their tapes. Guys, are y'all ready to do that, just for a second? This next one is going to be a topic that'll probably take a few minutes, so can we just have just a moment to let you, allow you to go ahead and do that? A lot of that, that we're going to hear over the next couple of months, that will be placed on work session agendas for us to discuss. And while we are talking about that, I actually asked and did not get any replies, but if there were any additional information, since we left there, that board members would like to talk about, or add for an additional agenda item, or anything that came out of there that you didn't, we didn't discuss after we left the retreat. Is there anything off the top of your head? I know you just love it when I do that to you, but if you don't know tonight, feel free to give me an opportunity to do it later. We've got a couple of things coming back for the November, and then also, we talked about Common Core, which I know this was a little confusing tonight, because the Common Core was what we were talking about, and that's a whole different topic of conversation, but that'll come back to us in December. Jason, correct? And then there's a couple of other parking list items that we had, that'll also come back to us in December. But if there's something else that you thought about after we left the retreat, make sure that you just email it to me, okay? And with that, are we good? Okay, so let's move on to 5.4. This will bring Mrs. Kathy Auger back to the podium. And board members, this is the approval of the Cabarrus County School Salary Study.
Good evening again. I appreciate the opportunity to continue our discussion of worthy objectives this evening. I'd like to say, to achieve our academic goals, it is crucial to recruit and retain well-qualified employees. I bring to you tonight a recommendation for performance of a salary study and updated job descriptions, which I believe are critical in meeting our goals. A full salary study was last completed in 1994-95. As you're aware, salaries of current employees have been frozen for four years. While we strive to provide a positive nurturing environment for employees, we also recognize that it's important for salaries to be reasonably competitive with neighboring school districts, and for our technical skilled positions to be reasonably competitive with other public and with private entities. You may ask why we're bringing this forward during a period of limited budget. I would say that during a period of limited budget, we recognize that it's even more important to invest our dollars in a targeted manner. This study would provide specific direction for prioritizing our needs in relation to salaries, and it would provide us with three different options, recognizing our changing budgetary and financial requirements. While funds in the next few years may be limited, a plan would help us to prioritize funds which may be made available to us, and help us recognize in an important way our greatest asset, that is the employees of our school district. An RFP for these services was issued to 10 vendors. The Budget Committee reviewed the five responses received on a variety of parameters, including financial stability, previous experience with school systems, and governmental entities. They looked at the timetable, the completeness of response to all components of the proposed study, including revised job descriptions, whether it had multiple implementation options, and a fixed cost. And the Budget Committee recommended Springsteen Incorporated, which also performed the 1994-95 salary study here, and also, they have performed salary studies for Cabarrus County Government, which I think is important, too, in expressing confidence at the county level. So I'm open that to any questions.
Okay, and I will open the floor for discussion, and I will begin on Mr. Shu's side.
Thank you once again, Madam Chair. I think that we're a little bit behind times in moving forward with this. Ms. Auger, I'm glad that you thought it was time to do it, because after about 15 years, I suspect we need to sort of get brought up into the 21st century, you know, and as I was mentioning about the other previous topic, you know, it's all about the, you know, getting things more competitive for our employees as well. And so I think that it's a good move. I hate to see us spend that little bit, $43,000 for that. I believe it's negotiated down from what it was.
We did negotiate that down from what it was, yes.
Yeah, and I appreciate Ms. Carpenter's, you know, indulgence there, you know, she persisted that we'd get it down a little bit, and you did, Carolyn, you did good on that, and I appreciate that. But I believe this will at least give us some direction and show us where we are and where we need to be, so that we can be competitive. And so I'm ready to go with you on that, Kathy.
I think it's fine, and I'm glad to see that it's going on. I didn't realize it had been 1994 since the last time it was done. I do have a question. Will they be comparing salaries and with not only the public positions, but with private positions of the same, where it's possible? I know it's not always possible.
If it's a position where the market is competitive with private, yes, yes, they could.
Okay, I'm kind of like Mr. Shu. You know, you kind of hate to spend money for the obvious. I mean, we know we're behind, and we're going to pay someone to tell us we're behind, but it's also good to have a benchmark to kind of know where actually you are, so I guess I can support that.
Same way, you know, I hate to spend money, and I did try to get them down. We did get them down some. But it is, we need to know where we're at, and as Kathy had mentioned, we do have some positions we're not being able to fill. And they did say they were going to be going private sector and the other, is that correct? And I think one of your biggest concerns were making sure that we did get job descriptions, is that correct?
That is correct.
Because we did not have that on a lot of our positions.
But they have not been updated for quite some period of time.
Okay, that was my concern.
Well, in reading the details of what we're going to be, you know, the column of what it includes, I think you've done a nice job of being thorough and making sure we get relevant information that we're going to need. And, you know, I'm glad to see that we, Ms. Carpenter was able to put the needle to them a little bit, so that's good, save us a little money. Fact of the matter is, they're not going to do it for free, so we have to pay them something. And so, you know, that's what we're going to do, but we're going to get information that we can act on, and then hopefully make good productive decisions from there, so I'm fine.
I just have a couple of questions. That is all across the board on numbers.
Yes, it is.
The RFP that went out, was that very clear in what they were asked to do and respond to?
It's pretty lengthy and pretty clear. I believe, I will tell you that the two, that it seemed that there were two very high ones, and then there were three that are more reasonable, kind of grouped together. And the two very high ones are kind of major business players that, and they kind of fell together, and then ones that I believe are more focused on, not necessarily high business, but do, you know, more governmental schools, more of a focus in a variety of different areas. Those are the ones that seem to be clustered together.
That was just such a huge difference. I was, I wondered if the size of the number of employees, or the system, or what made the difference in there?
The very large bids were by extremely large firms.
Okay, okay. And can you tell me, it says the City of Concord does theirs yearly, but it's internally. That, I wasn't sure, internally, does that mean their own staff does it, and they go out for comparisons of other counties and cities, their size, or?
What I would suggest doing, it's been a long time since we've done a comprehensive study. I would recommend that we do a complete study, and then I think at that point, they give us the tools so that we can continue to do that annually on our own for specific positions.
So then we can move to doing one internally?
Yes.
Oh, that makes perfect sense. Okay, so board members hearing that, are we good to add this to the consent agenda to allow Mrs. Auger to move forward? Comment?
Okay, if we do that, I would like it kind of to be in our notes, then, that we make it mandate, that we do do that, that we say, "Okay, if we do this, then we're going to require you from now on." Not let it slide, that if we're going to put this money and invest this money, then we're going to require your department to do this.
I need a break there for a second. I don't think we could tie up a future board to do something like that. We might have to have our...
Well, we're not, I'm not tying them up, I'm saying this department, we're investing this money now. We're telling this department that now we've invested this money, we're required... We're telling this department that now we've invested this money, we're requiring that department-
I'm just saying if a future board wanted to go somewhere again in five years or six years and look at what's going on then, I'm not sure that they would be handheld to-
Madam Chair, what I would recommend is we, you know, I don't think we can really require or anything like that, but I believe what we could do though, Ms. Auger, was have some type of a guideline that in, say, five years, it will be looked at again internally versus, you know, doing what we're doing now. Because, but, you know, I don't want to, you know, put something on another board, but we can put some kind of a guideline.
I'm not saying the board, but what I'm saying is, well, it's me, people get slack and, this board has made an investment, and I'm saying the departments, I'm making sure that those, that the department does it.
If I can please, I'd like to assure the board that Ms. Auger has been very enthusiastic about getting this since I've met her here four years ago and probably before that. Something is badly needed. I don't, I think that you can trust us that once you've invested to give us a chance to get this information updated, that we will continue to keep it up to date. It's to our, to our best interest and our, to our advantage to do that. So you, you don't need to direct us to do it, we're going to do it anyway, okay?
Okay, well, I just want to make sure, okay.
Okay, everyone still good for the consent agenda? I get a shake of the head? Okay, great, thank you. Okay, next we will have Mr. Van Huculum and Mrs. Adrian Robinson to the podium. This is your 5.5 item for the approval of the Opportunity School Plan. Board members, let me know when you're there.
Madam Chair, members of the board, every year you need to vote on the School Improvement Plan for the Alternative School, and so Adrian is here today to report on the three criterion that you need to hear about that and then vote on that plan. So this is Adrian Robinson, Principal at Opportunity School.
Good evening, members of the board and Dr. Shepherd. I wanted to present to you the three goals that we chose for the 2011-2012 school year for the Cabarrus County Opportunity School. We chose these goals because they were very much aligned with our school improvement goals, and we wanted to make sure that we weren't addressing things twice. But we also wanted to make sure that we chose goals that were essential to what we do at the Opportunity School. The first one we chose was Goal Three, School Safety and School Conduct. The percentage of students receiving discipline referrals in the 2010-11 school year was 37%. So we wanted to decrease that number by 2%. We recognize that the discipline laws have changed and there may be challenges, but in order to reach those goals, we put a number of strategies, and I'd like to just give you a few of those. We've, we've actually launched a Caring for At-Risk Students, Student Services Intervention Team. We call it the Cars Team, and I have a few of those members here with me right now. They are essential to what we do at the Opportunity School because, as you know, we have many students who come in with behavioral challenges that ultimately affect their academic success. So we need a team of individuals to come together to talk about how we're going to meet the needs of the students. We also implement behavior contracts. We also frequently update student behavior intervention plans for the EC students. We have guidance referrals. We have parent-teacher-student conferences. We also have student alerts for staff because there's a lot of students that come in, and lots of times when we attend the AEPC meetings, we're only privy to that information, myself and Dr. Sane and Chris Lauter. So we wanted to make sure the students that come, staff are aware of the issues that the students come in with, and we also offer interventions for the classroom. We have professional development. I want to thank Dr. Shepherd for actually paying for our diversity training with Dr. Hutchinson, UNC Charlotte. We have Gangs of One that support us, that Sergeant Bernie Luce. We have CPI training with Paul Topper. My entire staff has been trained for CPI because we know that's important because there may be times where we have to restrain a student or, and we want to make sure that we're doing it in the proper way. We have training by the Substance Abuse Prevention Services on what's new in the drug world. As you all know, that drugs are a serious problem for this generation, so we want to make sure that our staff is aware of what to do if they suspect alcohol or drug abuse. Goal Two, option two would be Goal Five, Student Progress and Proficiency. The percentage of students proficient on the middle school reading EOG was 33.3%, and we want to increase it by 43.3%. If you look at that number, it doesn't look very well, it doesn't look very good, but we do know that alternative schools, we don't choose the students that come, and many of them come with behavioral challenge, again, that affects their academic success. So we, again, put a number of strategies in place to make sure that we reach that goal. One of those things is common planning for all middle school teachers. We don't have, we have not had a PE teacher, but we, so that kind of affected, that really affected our schedule in many ways, but what we've done is, we've actually used all our non-certified staff to assist us so that teachers would have common planning time that is sacred. We've actually incorporated 15 minutes of reading time, drop everything and read. We've also incorporated iReady, an iReady assessment that we use to establish a baseline for students in reading or math, just to determine their strengths and weaknesses when they walk in the door because, again, our students come from all across the county, and there's really no way for us to determine what they know or don't know. We've purchased new textbooks for all middle school students that provide rich multicultural texts that engage the disengaged learner, and we, and we've also placed a strong emphasis on reading across the curriculum. We recognize that literacy is a problem. Option Three, Goal Seven, is our community involvement, and I'm really excited about that because we have Ms. Stephanie Wallace with us. Ms. Wallace, would you mind standing for me? She does a dynamic job with making sure that we tap into the community resources that we have in order to meet the needs of our students. Again, because our funding is very low, but we do, we do depend on the community to make sure we make things happen for the school. Let's see, there were four community organizations actively involved in the school during the 2010-11 school year, and we wanted to increase that by two organizations for the current year, but we have surpassed that two already, so we've met that goal. We have a number of new community partners that I'm excited about that support our school, and I'm just going to list a few. We have C-Van, we have, of course, the Substance Abuse Prevention Services, we have Gang of One, we have Samaritan House Night Shelter, where students do community service, we have the Howell Care Center, we have Boys and Girls Club, we have Red Cross, we have Boy Scouts of America, and we have New Life Baptist Church. So I'm just proud that, you know, the community is coming together to help our school be successful. So those are the goals for the Opportunity School. Have any questions?
Thank you. I'll open the floor for discussion and begin with Mr. Kiger.
No, I guess I don't have any questions. I'm glad to know that you've already increased the community involvement by two. That's a huge, huge part because I know the students you get, you know, the population as a whole, parental involvement's huge. Well, the students that you get, that's just probably, you know, I don't want to make a broad generalization, but it's probably not there, and that's part of the reason why they're there. But, so that, that part of it is huge. But I can tell you, I guess I'm confident that you'll be able to achieve these goals, and I'll tell you why. When you and I had the opportunity to meet and sit and, we sat in your office and chatted, and you looked me right in the eye and you told me, "I like it here and I want to be here." And you can't bluff somebody when you look them in the eye. And so I know that if you want to be there and you like it there, that you're going to be successful and you're going to achieve these goals. And the next year when you're back here, that 43, we would have hit, and we're going to be talking about 53 or beyond. So I am absolutely 100% confident that you're going to be able to do that. So these goals, good, you know, I hope we provide the tools for you to do it, and, you know, that, I don't know how to finish that other than say, "I wish you well."
Well, I think they're wonderful, and I think you've got a great plan there, and I was, I'm with him. I'm glad to see your Goal Three, you've already exceeded, and the community involvement is very important, and I think you're doing a wonderful job.
Thank you.
And I can see it in your eyes, and you're doing great, and thank you for everything you do.
Thank you.
I don't have much to say. No, your goals are very attainable, and like I said, you've already gotten to one of them, so just keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Just congratulations to you for what you're doing, and I think your goals, as he said, are very attainable. I'm interested in the community involvement. How do you go about soliciting community involvement from organizations? I can think of many that might want to hear your story.
Well, Ms. Wallace, she is extremely active in the community, and she works, you know, in addition to what all the other responsibilities that she has as teacher assistant, she works to make sure she taps into resources. She's a member of a, of a local faith-based organization that connects her with other organizations, and she's worked in the community. She has about 14 years working with DSS in Connecticut, and she's done some things in the area. So with those connections, you know, with those connections, you build other connections. So we just reach out to organizations who want to assist our students. We tell them, look, we have students that have needs, we have students that, you know, one thing I'm proud of, too, we have, I forgot about the clothing closet that provides uniforms for our students. So we tell them the needs of our students, we tell them, you know, we don't tell them in detail what our budget looks like, but we tell them, this is what it takes to operate the program. We tell them about some of the students who have needs as far as family needs. You know, we tell them about students who have mental health illnesses, and we talk to them about the needs of our staff, who, you know, of course, they need to be trained on what to look for so that we can address it in the educational environment. So we just, word of mouth, you know, we just open our mouth and talk to everyone, not everyone, but we talk to those that we feel that can help us. Actually, today, Dr. Sane gave us, talked to us about hospice, and how hospice can provide grief counseling for some of our students, which we need. And so if we had not had that conversation, Ms. Wallace would not know to contact hospice. So it's just word of mouth, and there are a lot of people who know what we do at the Opportunity School, and they support the mission. So again, just people are just open to helping the Opportunity School.
Thank you for being here tonight, Adrian, and I noticed on the Goal Three, Four, Three, Five, and Seven, but I'm just curious, what was your Goal One and Two, just out of curiosity? Was there a Goal One, your number one goal?
No, there was not a Goal One. We had the option to choose, we had eight to choose from, we had a menu, so we chose the three that were most important. Well, kind of, that were, again, that were aligned with the School Improvement Plan because we felt like we didn't want to do anything separate from what we already do. So we just figured that these three were very important to the success of our school, like student conduct is a biggie. It really affects everything else we do. If we don't get the conduct under control, we can't have community organizations coming in because it will truly be mayhem when they come in. So that is the building block for everything we do at the Opportunity School. And of course, student achievement, that is a goal, you know, although many may see it as a behavioral site, it is an academic learning center, and we want to encourage, you know, families and students who enter that, this is not a place where you can go and just sleep and misbehave. We require that you learn something when you're at the Opportunity School. So again, we're changing the perception of how the school is viewed in the community and with parents and students. We want them to know that, again, it is an opportunity for them to be successful and have a turnaround.
I agree with you absolutely. Thank you.
Dr. Shepherd?
Just wanted to thank Ms. Robinson and her staff for their commitment to excellence at the school, you know, that you have a bright future ahead of you and that you're looking after these children who have not been able to succeed in other environments but can succeed in yours. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
I will just actually ditto that statement, saying that we hear a lot of different statements that are made about the school, that people think it is just a babysitting service over there where kids are sent, but they don't realize that they're actually, they are learning, they're receiving credits, they're moving towards graduation. That is the reason for them to be there, to kind of remediate their situations, and it's extremely, extremely benefit to that student that is not successful in a traditional high school. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, and so, board members, I'm assuming consent agenda, all is well?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, and with that, we will move to 5.6, which was, is actually the beginning of the approval of new policies and policy revisions on first reading. I'm going to do as I normally do, I will read the policy number, the description, ask for comments or questions. If I hear none, I will move forward. Dr. Sane, is that okay with you? Dr. Sane?
Yes.
Is that okay with you?
Yes, yes. I just wanted to say one thing about the first read policies this time. Most of those policies are centered around human resources and are required by legislative changes that occurred over the summer, so.
I will begin. Policy 1510, 427270, School Safety. Comments or questions? Hearing none. Policy 3530, Citizenship and Character Education. Comments or questions? Hearing none. Policy 4100, Age Requirements for Initial Entry. Comments or questions? Hearing none. Policy 4150, School Assignment. Comments or questions? Hearing none. Policy 4316, Student Dress Code. Comments or questions? Hearing none. Policy 4353, Long-Term Suspension, 365-Day Suspension/Expulsion. Comments or questions? Hearing none. Policy 7130, Licensure. Comments or questions? Hearing none. Policy 7200, Professional Standards of Conduct and Performance for Teachers. Comments or questions? Hearing none. Policy 7810, Evaluation of Licensed Employees. Comments or questions? Hearing none. Policy 7815, Evaluation of Non-L licensed Employees. Comments or questions? Hearing none. Policy 7820, Personnel Files. Comments or questions? Hearing none. Policy 7930, Licensed Employees, Demotion and Dismissal. Comments or questions? Hearing none. Policy 7950, Probationary Teachers, Non-Renewal. Comments or questions? Hearing none. So may I have permission to place those on the consent agenda as well? Do I get a shake of the head from all? Okay. Let's move to 5.7, Approval of New Policies and Policy Revisions on Second Reading. We will go through the same protocol. Policy 1500, Governing Principal, Safe, Orderly, and Inviting Environment. Comments or questions? We are on 5.7, right under your first approval of policies. Is everyone else there? Ms. Carpenter, you haven't? 5.7, it's the very next one. You good? Okay, all right. Policy 1500, Governing Principal, Safe, Orderly, and Inviting Environment. Comments or questions? Hearing none. Policy 1740, 4010, Student and Parent Grievance Procedure. Comments or questions? Hearing none. Policy 2500, Hearings Before the Board. Comments or questions? Hearing none. Policy 3430, School Improvement Plan. Comments or questions? Hearing none. Policy 3470, 4305, Alternative Learning Programs, Schools. Comments or questions? Hearing none. Policy 3520, Exceptional Children Programs, Rights of Students with Disabilities. Comments or questions? Hearing none. Policy 4115, Behavior Standards for Transfer Students. Comments or questions? Hearing none. Policy 4260, Student Sex Offenders. Comments or questions? Hearing none. Policy 4301, Authority of School Personnel. Comments or questions? Hearing none. Policy 4307, Disciplinary Action for Exceptional Children, Students with Disabilities. Comments or questions? Hearing none. Policy 4310, Integrity and Civility. Comments or questions? Hearing none. Policy 4315, Disruptive Behavior. Comments or questions? Hearing none. Policy 4320, Tobacco Products, Students. Comments or questions? Hearing none. Policy 4325, Drugs and Alcohol. Comments or questions? Hearing none. Policy 4340, School Level Investigations. Comments or questions? Hearing none. Policy 4341, Parental Involvement in Student Behavior Issues. Comments or questions? Hearing none. Policy 4352, Removal of Student During the Day. Comments or questions? Hearing none. Hearing none, I assume I have permission to place these on the consent agenda as well?
Thank you.
Okay. You're welcome. All right. True. Okay, board members, we will move on to 5.8, and this is the approval of lease of athletic fields at old WR Odell Elementary School. We will have Mr. Lynn Wiki back to the podium. Let me know when you're there. And your attachment is the athletic field proposal, so that's what you need to be actually pulling up. Everyone there? Okay, Mr. Wiki, if you'll key up, it's all yours.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you know from previous meetings, we-
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, as you know from previous meetings, we, we had gone out in a, a written app, written ad in the local newspaper to ask people who were interested in the use of these fields to submit a proposal or a lot of interest to us to give us some ideas to, uh, who was interested in what they were looking at for the fields. At the same time, uh, we also spoke with Dr. Williams from Harris Road Middle School, uh, because he had previously voiced a strong interest in, in the ability to use those fields for his students. Um, so we, we did get two responses. We got one from, uh, Cabarrus County Clash, which is a lacrosse, um, organization, and a second group of Carolina Sport and Social, which was, it's basically a soccer and kickball organization. Both community groups, both teaching youth about their sports. Uh, the Clash, um, is very interested in developing that as a sport within the schools. So they've worked with the management, management staff, principals and managers at, um, both Winkler Middle School and Robinson High School to establish, uh, at least tentatively, the idea of having teams in those schools. Uh, their focus would be that they would like to have a long-term relationship with the county, uh, and, and literally develop the program so that small children would grow up thinking lacrosse, playing lacrosse and sort of living lacrosse. And, uh, and really making that part of the community's fabric of sports. Um, we, I should mention also, uh, we also had Gary Calamery involved in, in the discussions as well. And, um, the Carolina Sports and, uh, uh, Social Group, uh, obviously want to continue. They, both organizations are coming out of, uh, Charlotte Mecklenburg. They've had relationships with, with those communities over, over some period of time. Um, I believe that, it's my understanding that Carolina, uh, Sport and Social will continue a relationship in a, in a location in Charlotte. I'm not certain that the Clash is not really, you know, cutting their relationship and in fact focusing here. Long story short, uh, we've looked at the proposals. Um, as you may or may not know, most of the facilities that are located, including the buildings, outbuildings such as the concessions, uh, toilet facilities, dugouts and whatnot, lighting, fencing, many of the things that support and make up the fields at Old Odell are in severe need of, of renovation. And, uh, we looked at the proposals and in effect, the Clash was able to propose that they could fund the replacement or upgrading of all of those facilities as part of their lease agreement with, with the board and, and make that a part of their agreement, uh, over a period of, they'd like a four or five-year lease. And you can understand that if they're gonna make that kind of financial investment, they'd like to have a commitment from you all to, to let them continue to use that facility for that period of time. Um, they, um, I think are, they had a very elaborate proposal. I have it in PowerPoint form. I didn't put it out there as that. I think I basically gave you the printed form of that PowerPoint, but it's very detailed. Um, they, they are very well organized. And I think that the key that sold us all, and we did meet individually with each group, uh, and I think the key that sold us all was the fact that in, in Clash's mind, and it's true of Carolina Sport as well, the school system would be number one. Their, their needs and, and the use of those fields comes first. And, and they've made the commitment, uh, to, to make certain that that happens. And then secondarily, that, uh, uh, if the Clash were to, in effect, organize and, and sort of orchestrate the use of the fields, they would make every effort to make playing times available to Carolina Sport and so, and Social Club as well. So we felt it was the best balance of all worlds. It gives the Harris Road Middle School the fields they desperately need to recreate their children. At the same time, it allows the fields, uh, to be really upgraded and maintained in a very high level. And so that's our recommendation is that we go with Caroli, with, excuse me, with, uh, Cabarrus County Clash as the leasing on this property. And I would like, uh, the board's permission to work with our legal staff and all the people I just mentioned as part of the, of our group to negotiate and, and develop a proposal, a lease proposal for your review and approval.
I will open the floor for discussion and I will begin on Mr. Shu's side.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, Lynn, my computer went down. My battery was going out, so I missed a lot of your conversation there. But I, as I was, um, preparing for tonight's meeting, I read somewhere, and maybe you can tell me where it was, or if it's even part of our consideration tonight, it's where one of these two organizations there was wanting to be able to have it within their authority to move buildings, take buildings down or whatever?
Yes. Um, and, and when they, the way it was worded versus our discussions may have turned out a little bit differently. I mean, I've explained to them that there are building standards, that we do things in a certain way. We have to meet all county, county and state requirements for that work, so they understand that and they're aware of that. Uh, they know, for example, that we don't have water. We hope to cut off water permanently to those buildings and we did instruct them that they would have to bring a water main of their own to serve those buildings and they were fully willing to do that, so.
Well, I see it's a win-win situation for them because I mean, it's not really being used for that much right now anyway. And, uh, it's gonna help Mr. Williams out at Harris Road and, uh, you know, be much more of a community asset. And, uh, you know, I think that we could probably move forward on it as far as I'm concerned. Thank you.
Uh, I'm in favor of it as long as the Harris Road School is able to use the facility as much as they need to use the facility.
Yes, ma'am. Yep.
And then the other one would be supplementary to that. But to get them to help pay for it is a wonderful thing.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Is that building at all then, if we ever had to?
Which building was it?
Yeah. The building that the PLC was in. Yeah, but I mean, if we had to say something extreme happened, would we be able to use that PLC building? I mean, if we do a lease, I mean, can we put something in there if we had to say something extreme happened?
Well, the lease would only govern the, the athletic fields.
Oh, okay. So we still have control. And so make sure we have something in there so we have that, uh, in case something. I would want to make sure we do have that in there.
I think the only thing would happen is if, if we, um, because if, if it's a very successful program and parking will be, be an issue at any given time, they've even talked about the need of using, there's a large parking lot out in front of the PLC and they said they would like to have the ability to use that parking area. And so I think that if, if the school district decided we were gonna put a program in there, you know, we'd, we'd need to work something out. The one benefit, of course, is that most of the programs that we're talking about, that, that, for example, if the Clash runs, are in the evenings or weekends. They're not during the day, during school days at all.
Well, I, but I'm saying when you're doing it, make sure you've got that part in there. That would be my, my thing. And the same thing Grace said, make sure we have something put in that contract. So we have first dibs on that if we need to.
Sure.
Okay.
I'm good.
And Lynn, I just want to clarify, this is the one that the county agreed with as well, correct?
Yes, yes, it is. Yes.
You know, my thought is, this is a great answer to some huge challenges out there for Harris Road Middle with particular parent involvement out there. I think this is a great answer for them. So I'm very much in favor of moving forward with this. My one question is, Mark, do we have to have an act, can I put this on the consent agenda or do we need an actual motion for this type of facility usage?
I think you can have a consent agenda action on adopting this recommendation.
And I'm really glad to see the lacrosse to come in. That is really getting to be a very popular sport. Oh, I'm sorry. And I'm really glad to see that. Uh, this is great for the children.
Okay, great. Uh, and Lynn, you've got your direction as far as making sure we have first priority, which is part of our facility and usage policy anyway. They should never violate that anyway.
Absolutely.
And if there's any building issues, that that should be entertained as well. And I'll read it when you get the contract ready. So everyone's good for consent agenda. Shake of the head. Okay, good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, now we will move to the five point nine, approval of the Mount Pleasant Middle School IT project bid. We'll keep Mr. Wiki. Board members, let me know when you're there. And you're there. Okay, Lynn. Are you there?
It just takes some minutes because we have to change screens.
You just let us know when you're ready.
I, I am. I'm just, um, wanting to get to the same place you were. Um, yes, as I mentioned before, the, the bids came in on all of these projects very well. Uh, Mount Pleasant, uh, which was the first one bid of the group of three that I spoke of, uh, came in below budget. Uh, the successful bidders, there's a, there's a two package or a two-part bidding process, one for equipment, one for the wiring install. Uh, iConnect Technologies, as I recall, was the wiring or cabling. Carolina Advanced Digital was the equipment package. And, um, and so all I can say is that I, I don't have the exact figures of the budget numbers, but we are below budget by about twenty-four or five thousand dollars and would recommend going forward with these projects, or with these awards, rather.
Okay. And I'm not even gonna go down the line. I'm assuming everyone is okay with this. Can I place this on the consent agenda? Is all good? Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we will move to the next one, which is the approval of the J.N. Freeze Middle School Re-roofing Project Bid Approval. And that's your five point ten. We will keep Mr. Wiki. Board members, let me know when you're there. And you actually have two documents, the bid tab and then the recommendation letter itself. Let me know when you're there.
Now, the, the recommendation letter, uh, by Mr. Brickhouse, uh, only refers to the base bid from Affordable Roofing, who was the successful low bidder. Uh, we would also like to take the alternate bid number one, which is sixteen hundred dollars. That was for an additional portion of roof, uh, to be done. And, um, this is, is, I, I will say leaves, uh, approximately a hundred and thirty thousand dollars on the table. So this came in extremely low, much lower than anyone anticipated. And that's a good thing. Uh, so we, we are happy to say that, that those funds are available. Um, I, I would like to, before we do anything else with those dollars, probably in the spring, I, there's one remaining section of the roof that needs to be done. And I would like to bid that section, uh, in the spring and, and see what that comes in at. But, um, and use, you know, some of those funds to pay for it.
And I just have to ask you one question. In doing that, do we have to go back to DPI and let them know that we have changed the demographics on that project and they'll be adding some pieces to it?
We probably need, yes. What, what we originally did was we shrunk it when we were taking money to use for PLC. So now we would be expanding it back to the original scope if we did that. And, uh, but let's see where the dollars fall and, and where all the other projects need, need to go dollar-wise before we make that decision.
And you're saying that would be done in the springtime?
Yep.
Okay. I will open the floor for discussion. Ms. Carpenter, you go ahead. Are you, are you having trouble pulling that up?
No.
Okay. Did you have a question?
No, no, I've got it pulled up. I, I'm just real leery of that linear, 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 I couldn't even say it, linear foot price. I mean, look at that difference. Are you sure? I mean, have we used this individual before? I mean, when you see something that low, when you're looking at these other ones, when you're seeing linear, 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 I couldn't even talk tonight, linear foot price, say in sixteen, eighteen, twelve, and then you see eight eighty-four? Uh, you know, when you see something like that, you say, ooh, did they price it wrong? Or you really hesitate. Have you used these people before? You have. So, so you're okay with it?
Yes.
I mean, doesn't that kinda jump out at you? I mean, Holly, you're-
You know, I'm so used to seeing something, when I see a huge difference, I do. But, you know, knowing some of this roofing, uh, you kinda get with that anywhere because they get, you know, it's according on how much materials they're allowed to purchase at one time. They may get substantial amounts where another roofing company, company might have a lower amount that they keep on hand. So it's how much their bulk ability to buy, usespeak for that.
And I will say, just out of, out of, uh, as reference, uh, we bid, uh, three other projects, uh, two of which had, uh, EDPM, which is the, the brand name product that we specified on this roof. Affordable also won those two projects. So if I'm looking at it from their perspective, if I'm in an area, I can add another roof with the same product to be put down, I'll come in extremely, you know, low as well. I'll, I'll really sharpen my pencil.
So you're, you're real comfortable with that and think that's a, that's, uh, is reasonable then? They can do it then? Oh, okay.
Any other comments or questions from board members? Is everyone comfortable with the consent agenda?
Uh, just curious, Lynn, what's affidavit A or B? Just out of my own personal curiosity.
Yep.
On the right-hand side of the screen, affidavit A or B?
Oh, it, it's a, um, I believe it's a minority.
Well, there's a section on that, that's the column right next door, next, next to that identification of minority participation form. This is a different form, looks like.
Yeah, I'm not sure because I didn't make this form out, so I'm not-
Well, no, I didn't mean to catch y'all. God, I'm just curious out of my own, what's that?
Yeah, yeah. You're welcome.
Do you need clarification on that? Blake, are you?
No, I, I wondered the same thing and thought I'd ask him later. But, uh, what kind of engineer is Mr. Brickhouse?
He's a, uh, I was going to say, um, I know he worked for DPI for many, many years and he was their, one of their roofing specialists. Um, I would assume, like many civil engineers, they, they ultimately specialize in things. Some people go into soils and whatnot. Other people do other things. Um, he, I, I never asked him specifically, but I suspect that he's a civil.
Okay.
Yes.
There's always one in the group. Okay, everyone good for the consent agenda? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Lynn, are you good?
I am, thank you.
Okay, we are ready to move to five point eleven, which is the approval of Central Cabarrus High School window and door replacement and administrative office security improvements. We will keep Mr. Wiki. Board members, let me know when you're there. And you also have two documents here as well.
Recommend certainly, you know, if you'd like, we can look at the bid tab. It's, um, and, and it probably wouldn't be a bad idea to go to that first because I wanted to explain something. Um, this is a very complex project in terms of the number of alternates. And the reason we took so many alternates is because we really thought the bids were gonna be much, much tighter than they were on, on the windows specifically. And so, uh, the architect with his recommendation put together, I think, a total of thirteen alternates for both projects. But the majority of those were for the, uh, the windows. As it turned out, the windows came in very reasonable. And, um, and so when we looked at both projects, uh, the, the low apparent bidder for the combined number was TK Brown Construction. And, um, if you can, if I can just take you then to the next document. It explains in painful detail, um, what happened. In effect, we, we, we did get good bids. Let's see, one, two, three. Ten, ten total bidders. So that, that's, that was excellent. Um, and in, in looking at the bids, looking at Mr. Brown's combined bid, we, we realized that we were well under for windows, but we were over for the, uh, office security remodeling, uh, for the front administrative offices in the building. So we wanted to make certain that we did as much of either, well, both projects as we could. And so what we're recommending is that in the case of, uh, the windows, in order to provide sufficient money for the office remodeling and still maintain the bulk of the window project, we'd like to recommend that we drop off alternates eight and nine. Uh, and, and the reason for that is, is those are relatively, they're smaller areas, smaller buildings. Uh, their occupancy changes frequently. Uh, a place like Vocational Shop typically is not as well heated, to be honest with you, because people are moving in and out. They're bringing materials in and out all day long. Um, so we, we'd like to pull that off the table, so to speak, those two alternates for the time being, utilizing the funds from those two for two things. One is to make up the difference in cost for the, um, office remodeling and then to have a little bit of contingency on both projects because we're talking about some nitty-gritty remodeling here in an old building. And we really don't want to go in those projects without having a little bit of contingency. So that's our recommendation to the board. That is in effect what this sheet with all the, all the tables show is, is the breakdown of how we would allocate the funds. I recommend that. And, um, and with that, we will be able to do the lion's share of the windows and doors and all of the office renovation work.
And Lynn, I don't wanna, I wanna make sure that people understand when we're saying office renovation, that they don't think we're just out there making things pretty, that this is a safety and a security issue and this is aligning with some of the other schools of how people come in and out. So I want them to understand this is a safety issue remodeling, not just making things look good out there.
Absolutely, Madam Chair.
Maybe you can speak to that just a little bit of how-
Yes. Right now, literally, you could walk in, pretty much walk in the door and have complete access to the entire high school. Um, now, that, that's, uh, as we've learned from other experiences of the high schools, that's not a good situation in today's day and age. Uh, in this particular school, we have one door that's really controlled during, I mean, all the doors locked down, but we have one door that's controlled. Like I said, if you get past that door and a staff person who might come to visit or come to greet you at the door, you, you pretty much have access to anything. come to greet you at the door, you pretty much have access to anything. This redesign and reconstruction of the front office, in effect, establishes an actual lobby area where that's the only place you can go. Once you're inside there, you basically are contained there, so you can't go anywhere else. We need that kind of security, obviously, for the safety of everyone in the building. But we also, in light of that, we also have to protect other staff in that areas as well. So we created a lobby that's in effect separate unto itself, and then we've added things like... we've replaced a mailroom and copier and things that were affected by the change that we, in fact, take out because of the remodeling we're doing. But that's... it's all pretty basic to the security aspects of the facility.
And also, I just want to make, you know, just one reference to the window and door replacement. Some people say, well, what's the big deal? But that's a huge energy issue out there with Central.
Yes.
And most people that are familiar with that building would understand, you know, that that is a necessity. But hearing that, I totally agree with the elimination of alternate eight and nine to include, to have a little bit of contingency out there. Board members, do you have any comments or questions? Mr. Shu?
Only comment I would have is, Mr. Wiki, if we don't need the contingency and if everything falls in, we don't have anything unexpected, can we go back and do those eight and nine?
Yes.
Okay, that's good. And I tell you, overall, I'm just so glad to see us get this project done because when we did the tour, of course, you all know I graduated at Central a long time ago, and I'm sure it's the same windows and same doors it was there then, and then the security definitely is an issue. So, I mean, and like you said, you come in the front door, you've got the run of the school right there, and so that definitely needs to be corrected, and so I'm glad to see us get this done. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
Well, I'm all for that, but then, again, those two items need to be done. We know what energy we're losing, and for that amount, we're probably losing it in energy. I mean, really, I would like to see us go ahead and make sure we get that done because if it's... I don't know if those are as bad as those other windows, but again, I'd like to see us get that done. You know, when I saw that, those gaps in those other windows, I don't know if they were as bad, but I definitely... because, like I say, when you're looking at... what was that? Because you're looking at, what, 20? About 20? Well, that's what, around $35,000, $40,000 total?
Yes, ma'am.
And I bet we're losing about that in energy in a lot of those, so if we can get it in, I definitely would. I mean, I'm for going ahead and putting it on hold, but it needs to be done.
I mean, the only other option would be to pull money out of other things at this point, and I'd like to try and see where we go with this project first. One thing I did want to offer the Board is that we will, prior to actually writing a final contract with this contractor, I would like to sit down and go through his numbers with him and see if we can't negotiate some of those dollars down. Not that... he's not been competitive, and I don't mean that, but it's a large project. Usually, there's some give and take in large projects, and so I do want to at least let the Board know that we're going to do that with this contractor so that we know our... you know, I can say in complete confidence that we've done all we can to control the numbers.
And Lynn, I think that's an excellent idea, and also that if this takes any length of time, if it were to be something that we would have to send it back out to rebid, he may not get that opportunity. It may cost more later to do it. If he could actually work with us on it, he would get the job, and actually, we would get it at a better deal as well. So that's good. That'd be great. Is everyone... any other...
The only thing I was going to say is, this is... this project is a little different from the standpoint that this contractor, in order to get placement of orders for the windows and some of the early work that he needs to do, we'd like to have him under contract and underway by Thanksgiving, Thanksgiving weekend. So I was wondering if we could get approval of this particular project tonight.
Mark, can I do an approval for this item just by consensus as well?
Yes.
Okay. So is it... does anyone have any issues with consensus for them to go ahead and move?
For the law.
Okay. Okay. You have your approval.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I'm sure Mr. Downs, being in the audience tonight, has got to hear lots of good news since we've all had to talk about bids and where we were with that climate and the concerns that we had for it. We appreciate you being here with us tonight, and I know you'll have good news to take back to the county. Okay, with that, I will ask for a... I'm sorry. Absolutely.
I don't know if they'll see this, but I just want to remind everybody, get out and vote tomorrow. Polls start at... open at 6:30 in the morning, close at 7:30.
You got your piece in. All right. Thank you. May I have a motion that the Board convene in closed session pursuant to General Statute[1732.01]